I finally get to the flag of the United States of America. The republic order for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible liberty and justice.
The Select Board Rules of Procedure adopted aduely to ensure a productive meeting. Select Board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the Chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the Town Hall and available for everyone to review. Thank you.
So everybody here, we all know everybody. I have everybody who's online. So we are adding an executive session this evening to discuss labor relations agreements with employees, and I have no other additions or additions. Does anybody else?
I've got a few grant updates in old business.
Okay. So the minutes that need approval are from our last meeting, which was August 5th, but there is an edit to the Highway Foreman's Report section. Thank you, Tom. I said that there were three sealed bids, but there were actually four, so I updated that. That's all that I had, unless anybody else had any other edits.
I'll move to approve those minutes. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Post, carried. Announcements?
Nothing from me.
Do we have a report from the zoning administrator?
Yes. There is from Nancy, there's an updated... The updated zoning log has been posted, but nothing else to report besides that at this meeting.
Did everybody get that? Did you check?
Yeah.
Tried to copy it. I think I shared it with everybody today or yesterday when it came out.
Did you guys get the attachment? I didn't get the attachment.
I didn't, no.
Oh, I shared it without an attachment.
Yeah, the one that you replied to her is the one you forwarded us, and there was no attachment to it.
We got the sure ordinance and the other ones, but the one today we didn't have an attachment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it doesn't have the attachment.
Anything from the Planning Commission tonight? Nothing from the Planning Commission. Road Foreman's Report.
All right, so... The week of August 11th, they continued to clean ditches on Route 153 and River Road, fixed headwalls and inlet and outlets of culverts on River Road, grading of roads starting in the north of town on Briar Hill. This week, currently, they are working on grading the roads of Kelly Hill, Tadmer, and Rupert Hill, trucking services owed and returned to the town of Rupert, continuing to clean ditches on Route 153 and River Road, and installation of culvert section on River Road, as well as the inspection and cleaning of manhole covers on River Road. That's in preparation on River Road.
Should be 153.
I think that should be 153.
Yeah.
There was a meeting Bob and Rich and myself met with James last week to just go over the paving grant and put him in contact with the necessary people to kind of continue moving forward with that. So he, we've passed the baton, for the most part, over to him to work with coordination in terms of what they need from us in order to get prepared and establishing a timeline and connecting with the state in terms of getting the, you know, putting everything together. So he is, he and the rest of the crew are working on that. And then speaking of that, so there's been some turnover, so we did lose one member of the highway department. One of our team members put in his notice and moved on. So also in the meeting with James, we talked about kind of updating the job description, so we worked on that, and so that is going to be posted, very similar to what we've posted in the past, but so we'll be posting that. And James is going to be the point person, so in the past, it's been me who everything has come to, and so we sort of agreed that since he's going to be managing everybody and working with everybody, it makes the most sense for him to be the point of contact to establish the whole interview process, and then if he wants some support on that, I offered myself to be present and help him out along the way, but sort of to have him run that show for the most part, so.
Makes sense, he's the supervisor.
Yeah.
He can supervise.
Yeah, I thought the same thing. So anyhow, so that's the update on that.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Road?
I got a question, Mike. Over there by Betts Bridge. What's that hole there?
I think that's the piece of culvert that they intend on replacing.
It was all buried, and they ended up having to extend it. So it was plugged, and the end had been buried.
All right, thanks.
I actually have one thing. I know that this is not the town's world, but I've had two people come to me recently about the sinkhole on Route 30, right here on the sharp. Yeah. I've advised them to go to the state.
That's who, I don't know, does Patrick? You could, if you have time, possibly send an email to Patrick, saying I've had local residents complaining to me about that. You could send it in the right direction. We could just kind of forward that to the state.
Forward the concerns along to the state.
Maybe it pulls a little bit more if it comes from the town instead of just an individual person.
Yeah, I did, I let them know that it's not Pollet's jurisdiction to manage, but I have had two people say, oh, you know, just knowing that I'm involved with the town, wondering.
Doesn't seem to be fixing itself.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I know they're gonna, they plan to redo Highway 30 in a few years, but with how many years, who knows? They should fix it before then.
Yeah, I did check the most, because talking about that, I was like, well, it's going to be repaved, and they might be addressing it then, and then I did go on the website, and it looks like 2027 is now the best, most recent estimate for when our paving is going to happen, though it was meant to happen, I think, like, last summer, maybe? So anyway, I will send Patrick an email and see. Just let him know people are wondering.
Any other questions or discussion from Road Foreman's? Anything from the Assessor's Office?
Yes. They emailed, Karen emailed, an errors and omissions report. Requesting approval of the 2025 grant list change as shown, the parcel number 0130-7722. It's Carolyn Young and someone with the last name of Moore. No change to the name, and it's an adjustment on the grand list value due to the fact that there was an error on the grand list for that parcel, and there was a survey done and was recorded in the Clerk's Office, changing the acreage from 228 acres to 199.75. The Assessor's Office and the mapper did not receive the survey, therefore the grand list was never changed to reflect the acreage difference, so they are requesting that the Select Board approve that change.
I'll move that we approve this errors and omission report.
Thank you.
Any more discussions? All in favor?
Ah.
Post, carried. Anything else for the assessors? Town Clerk's memo.
Just one memo from the Agency of Natural Resources with regard to a stream alteration permit for giveback. I don't know, do you all have that?
Any questions about the Town Clerk's memo?
I do have a question, Mike.
Okay.
Who in our town would review this, then? Because you have to go online, and I mean, this tells you what, you can go, a final action, so you can go in and review it, but who in our town does that?
I don't know if the zoning administrator would look into that, possibly would be about, I mean, pretty much, it's out of our control, you know? The A and R, they apply to the A and R, and I don't, I don't even think the A and R has to ask us or let, or keep us in the loop. Do you know, Jessica?
I don't know, no. I mean, I think that any of us who want to can keep, can look at those, but it's not necessarily anyone's specific job to do it.
Right, so granted that the town really don't have a say because of the jurisdiction, but is there ever on the website where the town does have their input to it without us being notified?
Honestly, I've never been involved in anything like that. I don't know. Have you seen anything like that? Usually the A and R comes in and looks it over, and grants a permit.
We don't have any control over it.
So far, it's never been anything that affected the town or anything like that.
Yeah.
And we do work with the local representative from A and R, and he's always been good to work with around here, so I think that, my opinion of him, would be that if he felt that the town may have, it may affect us somehow, I think he would reach out to us.
He did.
Thanks. It just, it's never been anything of any kind of, any major thing that, you know, we've ever needed to be involved in. Usually most of the time, it's just.
Informational.
Cleaning up bank of a river or something like that, putting a bridge in or something like that. Town Traguard's memo.
Ready for you? Two warrants, oh, I'll be sick. Two warrants this week. Payables 11,266.95, accounts payable is 30,993.52. The breakdown is general fund 20,228, highway 15,886.28, and wastewater 6,371.91. My auditor came in yesterday and spent some time going through stuff and gathering information from me, and then he did take the books with him to finish the audit. Taxes have been steadily coming in, both property and wastewater, and then lastly, my office will be closed tomorrow.
Any questions for Julie?
I'll move that we approve payroll warrant 26011 and accounts payable warrant 26012.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Post, carried. Any other questions for Julie? Thank you for joining us. Emergency Management Director.
The warrants.
Oh, the warrants, we better sign them.
That's a good one.
That talking stick became a good one.
Tomorrow, it was like, hi, you'll print them.
What else is there?
It's all fun and games until you don't sign the warrants.
And people don't get paid.
There might be, thank you for being on top of the house. In the open meeting lot, move.
Oh, hold on a second. There's a couple steps here before you start chat.
There might be a change due to the Secretary of State thing of recommendation of mission critical.
Or everybody could just have to drive over here and sign them, because they were slacker the night before.
No, just to be done at the first part of the meeting, so that if there's any technical difficulties that happen, at least the payrolls and all that stuff has all been signed.
I mean, some might argue that 717 is the first part of the meeting.
Yeah.
But some might argue otherwise, perhaps, or some wouldn't argue at all, but I would go out on a limb and say 717 is the first part of the meeting.
So nothing from Bob, too?
No.
Health officer?
Nothing there either.
Facilities report.
I told Tom I'd get him some, a local contractor's name, or I have a local contractor's name, but now I just need to find their number.
Technology goes.
Yeah, he'll get there.
Do you have anyone servicing a heating system or air conditioning system at the library currently?
It's whoever we have here on the old decks.
Well, I saw Jake just past week, and I asked him to come and make sure that these two buildings were serviced, air conditioning and heating for the season.
Okay.
And get the correction with the, that one dermis that, that we have to shut that off, so I'll, I'll keep up. If we don't see anybody, just let me know, I'll be more than happy to annoy him a little bit and make him come.
Okay, and maybe we have to, in case we have to open the building, is all I was thinking, in case, in case he gets there eight o'clock some morning, one of us can open the building.
He's aware that ours, Julie and Deb work, so he tries to fit it in with that, so.
Okay. I did have to, sorry.
I think these are facilities as part of the library, if that's okay? We wanted some clarification on the steps to the building. We have identified those as an accessibility issue that we can work on with a grant that we have, and we were wondering if those steps are part of the building, or if the town has, you know, jurisdiction over them, or how to proceed with possibly fixing those steps.
To the best of my knowledge, it seemed like we were told by Matt Campbell that because the steps weren't fastened to the building, they could, because I think they said that we could fasten handrails to the steps but not to the building, because that's, that's what, that's what I understand, but I, I wouldn't dare, I wouldn't dare do anything without Matt Campbell's blessing on that.
Okay, and so we should go through the...
Make sure that, make sure that we, that you can indeed repair the steps without, whether or without her blessing, however it needs to go.
Okay, so that would be the first step for us.
I believe, I believe it was, we can make modern alterations to the steps for safety and that type of thing, because they're not attached part of the historical building. We need to put safety ahead of trying to make them.
Well, we were wondering if they're like the building or the road, you know, too, but we can...
Yeah, not the building.
Right, so.
The concrete is much newer than the building, the concrete steps.
So, okay, so we approached her and then asked, and then we'll come back to you, I guess.
The next question is, does anybody on the board have any issues with them moving forward to try and find a grant and work on repairing those steps?
We actually have a grant that we need to spend money.
So you already have a grant to do it, so now you gotta just work on the next process, so that's great.
Yes, and we've identified this as kind of a higher priority. The community has waited on it, so that's, that was why we put that one forward.
When do you have to spend it by?
I'm not sure. That was the one, the old, the old one, I think, the accessibility grant that we have. I'm not sure, it was, yes, we are, yes.
So is the board okay if they just keep us in the loop with what's going on with the steps and?
I am, and I would, and is the back railing part of that in steps, too?
I'm not sure what they...
Because that was one of the items we discovered during our walk around, that that...
I think probably that, just front steps and the back railing, we should kind of focus on the front steps, because they've been on and off through, basically through all my time on the board, they've come up, they've been repaired and then, and stuff, but it's, they've been discussed. I mean, when you were on the board with us, I think they'd come up several times, so.
I don't know if that was the back railing.
The back railing is, I think, definitely needs to be done, but we'll keep, we'll keep the two projects separated, I think, with you.
Okay, what's, what's the back railing? What's?
The back of the building.
On the ramp? Oh, okay.
Okay.
That the stones are falling out from underneath it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't believe it's a safety hazard at this point, but it doesn't get any better, so.
Right, right.
And potential updates to the ramp are on possibly the MRF grant.
That's, we had, had been, yes, that's what we were thinking. Okay, and the second thing is the windows, we washed the windows, they look great, but we didn't get to the top of it because they need, I believe the storms need to be removed in order for that to happen, or some kind of construction work needs to happen. So we were wondering if the Select Board has a recommendation of somebody to do that, the window work, so that they, the tops can be washed.
So they'd have to have a contractor take the storm windows off?
I believe separate from the window washers, yes.
How would you, how would you get to those windows? Just scaffolding ladder?
I don't know. I hope you have bad luck finding somebody to take them off, if you're getting the clapboards fixed up.
Finally, I finally made some contact, so I should have some information on the next meeting, but I can look into the windows work.
Oh, okay, that would be great, because they look great, but the contrast with the unwashed windows on top is kind of bothers us. Okay, those are our facilities, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have, I have a little question about the accessibility. So with the MRF, you're gonna have somebody come by and look at accessibility on both buildings, right? Do you know when that's gonna be about, give or take? You know, before we go tearing something apart and then do it wrong and?
Yeah, so the, that was, that was for a future thing, but I can address it now. Yeah, no problem. We have the contract signed tonight with the group architect, who is going to be doing our design, and they are in fact coming by this Friday to both the library and the Town Hall with their engineers. They're gonna come at three, and I'm gonna let them in here, and the library's open at the time, but maybe Cory, you would just let the library staff know that at three on Friday, there will be engineers, and they will need to get into the attic, so they will have to climb up with a ladder into the attic. But yeah, they will be then looking at the accessibility of the, of the ramp in particular, because that was written into what we wanted them to look at.
Julie has something.
That's Julie.
I just wanted to ask about the, were the steps at all a part of the MRF? Because the grant that they're talking about was only $10,000, so it's probably not gonna cover, like, a whole bunch on the steps, but it maybe would cover excess spit on the MRF.
Well, there, there's a bit of flexibility, because when the Regional Planning Commission was writing the request for proposals, they asked, what specifically do we want to do as far as accessibility? And I mentioned the ramp, and so they put that in there. But the way the contract is written, there's a lot of flexibility about, like, when they looked at it and start to write up designs, how much money are we gonna have to spend, and so how much can we do? So there's gonna be a lot of flexibility in that. So if it turns out that the ramp is too expensive to deal with, maybe we spend some money on the steps instead, I mean, it would be an option. Yeah. Basically, it just has to, I think it's about 20% of the grant has to be spent to bring a building up to ADA compliance if it's not currently at it, and this building is, so the library gets to have all the ADA money, basically.
And I think that you said that there's gonna be a working group, oop. Jessica, I think you said there's gonna be a working group, a library representative and planning commission representative, energy coordinator maybe, and the Select Board on this issue, so you would be deciding on who you're going to have as point person.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we've got this contract signed, and they want us to have their first meeting with the town, we'll want them to meet with somebody from the library and probably from the Planning Commission also, so we'll have to figure out who it is we want to have as the working group. But yes, now is about the time to start doing that.
Okay. Everybody all set on facilities? Wastewater, I did reach out to Jill and James together in a group text on the 6th of August, told Jill that we would be working on paving in October, and wanted to know if she knew of any of the manholes, and she said she was gonna look, and I included James on it so that they can get together and go from there, so.
I was on a group call, I think it was last Friday, with the, with the firm that Rutland Regional Plan Commission contracted to work out on those plans for the sludge tank. Yeah, the sludge tank, and they've got the plans drawn up, and so at some point... And so, um, at some point, Devon's gonna come meet with us about what the next steps would be, cause they have some ideas for pursuing grant funding for it.
Okay.
And so, yeah, um, I did, at that time, I asked them about the survey, cause you all had mentioned that last meeting, the survey on the town owned plot next to the wastewater. And they, I think they've done it already, they want, but they're just waiting to get the, um, plats from the person who did the survey. What they wanted to know, and I can forward to them, is, do we want just the digital files? Do we want like a printout? And if we want a printout, what size do we want, like the big one, like, or a small one? That's, that's what they wanted to know, so I said I'd ask everybody. I don't know how we normally keep our survey plans.
We've never, the, the gravel cut survey, we didn't even do a Mylar one, because there's the question of, of the, the right of way piece that we're trying to work through before we do a Mylar. Does Julie, or Sue, do you know if there's any real area that we have set aside for survey prints or anything like that, or?
Store.
Oh, where, the store?
Yeah, so, a town owned property could have surveys, or do, or does everybody's surveys go into a, uh, if you had your property surveyed, that, is that in a paper print that goes in with the, in the town hall, or?
I think, so my recollection, right, surveys that are recorded with the town have to be recorded on Mylar and then stored in a specific spot in the town hall. And I don't think town surveys are stored separately from any other survey.
They're not, yeah, they're not, and, and people can have their survey. We can double check with Deb, because I'm often wrong, but we, somebody can record, have a survey recorded and just have it, you know, in with their deed and things like that, and not have a big Mylar one in the, in that file.
Okay.
So, um, but you don't have to have, you don't have to have your survey recorded.
You don't have to have a Mylar one to have a survey recorded with your deed?
Right, you can, you can record anything.
They, they were willing to do a big Mylar and also like a small paper one. So I, I, I kind of think if we can get the big one, it would be nice to have.
It is.
And then we have, we have storage.
Yeah, I told them I thought we would want a physical one, but I would double check. So I will, I'll get back to them that we do want the large physical one.
Yeah, I didn't. Might wanna ask Deb if she wants the smaller one, put it in there, just.
I can ask Deb that.
Right.
Cause it was easier for us when we went re, looking for town to find the big ones.
Yes, definitely.
Anything else on the wastewater? Reports to the community, anything from the Meadowway School Board? Anything from the Pol- Public Library?
Yes.
Yep, thanks, um, so regarding the MRRP grant, we did appoint, or have two members who wanted to be a part of that, and they thought maybe they could fill in for each other if, um, the scheduling was an issue. Um, they kind of wanted to work together, and they were really thankful that, to have that. The whole board was thankful to have, Lauren and Grace were both entrusted, yep. Um, the book sale, I know Sue mentioned it, but it was a huge success. Um, we don't have the final numbers for expenses, but we, the, the income, the proceeds were a little higher than last year. And we wanna thank all of the many, many, many volunteers. Um, it just takes a lot to make this happen, and it was just a wonderful community event, so. Um, then, the last thing is about our director position. We have several applicants. Um, we met in regular meeting last week and were able to narrow it down to five going forward. And the hiring committee met today, we worked on our questions that will be submitted in writing to the applicants. Um, and those have been approved by council already. Um, so, we're kind of checking in at each point, just to make sure we're on the right path and have our paperwork that is, um, that's good, so, uh, I think that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Great, anybody else having questions for the library board? Okay, thank you. Older unfinished business, Turkey Marker. So, I didn't see an attachment by the time I got the email. So where, where did the Historical Society decide that they would like to place it?
At the rail trail?
Do you want me to tell you?
Oh, or, or you can, go ahead.
Go for it, please.
I'm, I'm just going by what John said.
Great.
The West Polat Rail Trail.
Okay. And we can do that, because that's the state property, so we need to have permission from the state, right?
If we wanna put anything in the right of way of the rail trail, yeah, the state.
Or they suggested across where the picnic table is.
There is the two, they had suggested two locations, one with a town owned property at the corner of Railroad Ave and Egg Street, and the other was the state owned D and H rail trail property adjacent to the existing informational kiosk. Um, they both offer several distinct advantages, including high visibility and accessibility, local relevance, educational value, minimal impact, and low maintenance.
Okay, within a, within a short distance of where the, most of the birds were released, so it's acceptable. Within, within two miles or something.
The attachment had a little map with locations on it, if you wanna see it, I can print it out. Do you, can you all picture it?
Yeah, I can picture it, so.
I can picture it, yeah, okay.
If, if it was going by the rail trail, then we'll have to talk to.
Well, I, I said rail trail, but I, I, I meant West Polat where there's people actively.
Okay.
I'm gonna adjust what I said.
Not exactly, on the state owned rail trail portion.
Didn't say state.
Okay, okay.
I guess I'm curious, you know, on the D and H part.
Maybe you can print out one copy of it, so we can have a look specifically.
I would love to, okay.
Cause then we can know whether it is on the town owned property or on the state owned property.
Well, there are two options. One is town owned and one is state.
I don't think VTRN would have a problem with it, cause this is a state initiative. I don't think the VTRN would have a problem with it, cause it is a state initiative, not a town initiative that's putting it up. It's the state, so it's on state property, so they could put it on their own property.
If we do wanna put it there, um, I have the contact information of the person at VTRN who does the rail trails. Because, I mean, and you're also on the rail trail council, so you can bring it up.
So, I, I would lean toward the rail trail versus the picnic table and the bench on the other side, because I moved the picnic table and the bench, thanks to the, uh, current land order next to us that's been mowing the lawn, so they could clean underneath them too. But I don't see anyone using the benches or the picnic tables. And this is quite a proud moment, and we really should have this where people are actually gonna stop and be right next to where they're walking by, that's why I was asking, you know, and, but, that, I think that's part of, on the trail, right? Cause that's Egg Street, that's where the picnic table would be? Am I reading that right?
This go out to, uh, this goes down towards 22, right?
Well, there's that Egg Street.
Yeah, 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 so, so that location there is, that's where the lawn, that's where the bench is now.
So it's this one, then?
Yes, right by the.
Right by the trail?
Just before the bridge.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this one is on the town owned plot.
Right, I like that idea, I do, too.
That one is.
Uh, rail trail.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
I like, I, I think that would be the nicest place.
It's a little closer, yeah.
The other thing about putting it on the town owned plot, we really haven't developed the town owned plot yet. I'd hate to, to just plop that in there and then have it kind of interfere with the development.
Yeah, cause we do wanna put in some, we are still getting some more things to put in there, like the bike rack and stuff, so, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Do we need to get ahold of that guy from, oh?
Well, I think.
First game, or?
Yeah, I think though, probably what needs to happen is we need to contact the state.
Get, get permission from the state, right there.
And then once we get permission, we would, I mean, I can also contact David from, from, who came to us originally.
So maybe if we kind of copy him on a question to the state, then they could, then they can, I'll talk it over.
You can talk to Nick, cause he has the contact at Rutland Regional Planning, he is.
I can get you the contact, because you're going to send a message.
And, and they're generally into signs anyways.
Okay, good, any other older unfinished business?
Um, yes, there was, yes, in speaking of this, um, of the, of the picnic tables, the bike rack and the bike fix-it station have been ordered. Both the ones that Polat is gonna use in West Polat and one that Rupert is gonna use, they are gonna be arriving at the town garage. They, so, you, cause you were involved with ordering them, yeah. So I'm gonna get in touch with James, and I'm gonna let him know they're coming. And I'm gonna get him in touch with Rupert, so that the folks from Rupert can come and pick them up from the town garage and then go install them in Rupert. I know we were originally talking about having, and that a little concrete has to be laid down for the, for both of those things, I think. I know we were originally talking about having the town crew do it. Um, the Rupert town crew doesn't wanna do theirs, cause they're really busy this time of year. So I don't know if our town crew is too busy to put down a little concrete, or if we wanna hire a contractor to do that instead. I was, Rupert kind of is leaning toward hiring a contractor to do it, because we have a little money left in that grant. So I was just curious what the rest of the, um, select board thought. And if you know anybody who wants to get paid for laying down a little concrete.
Okay, but we really don't have a layout of where it's gonna go?
Um, we do have a layout of where it's gonna go. Nick at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission has a little, like, drawing that we did last year. We had a, like, little meeting of folks in West Polat, and they, we kind of like planned out where things would go, yeah.
My suggestion would be to hire a contractor, just because our road crew already has their hands full.
Yeah, that's what the Rupert crew thought, too, yeah.
And if there's money in the, available to pay the contractor.
Maybe we could get the same guy to do both.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Are you gonna do an RP or RP?
No.
We're gonna try, try our best to find someone that was, that could make time to do it.
Yeah, and we're getting toward the end of this grant, and so, it won't be a very large expense, probably, just to pour concrete for two things, so. Yeah, we're working with Nick from the Regional Planning Commission who's helping us with that grant. It's one of those grants where when we first wrote it, that was when I first got on the board, and I didn't know a lot about writing grants, and we didn't really write in that somebody was going to manage it for us, like how we write in a lot of grants now. And so I've kind of been doing too much managing of this grant, but Nick sort of jumped in, and he's not even really getting me in first port, it's just the Regional Planning Commission is helping us, which I appreciate.
Very nice.
Where, where would I just go and be able to see that map, but, wait, is that something?
Um, I will see. Yeah, let me see if I can get hold of that little map, feel like you said, cause you had to move them, yeah, to, for the, for the.
The last time, they, they molded underneath them for me, but prior to that, I was swinging them around, so.
Yeah, okay.
I do know a contractor that would, I'm sure would do that.
Yeah, will you message me the person? Great, thanks.
You can call him.
That's great. Picnic tables, all right.
Cause if we looked at putting some type of stone underneath the picnic table, or the bench to where the mowing is not an issue, I mean, some type of chip or something?
We could put some gravel, or we could slate, we could put some slate under, yeah. Well, if this contractor who's gonna lay the concrete could also lay either gravel or slate or something under the picnic table, that would be real nice, too.
In the shape of a turkey.
You might get a landscaper.
Julie?
Oh, really?
I just want to reinsert, um, Linda Linton had a really good suggestion of, like, seeding that with micro clover that never grows tall enough for you to need to mow.
Uh-huh.
And it's really nice, and it's like squishy and nice foot feel, and I think that we should maybe look into finding some seed that would work.
Okay.
I like that idea.
Yeah, it's already seeded with gravel, but, grass, clover, clover, sorry. That's what I said, it's seeded with gravel.
You may have heard of the elusive gravel seed.
I wanna know what kind of drill rig you got that puts gravel in there.
Okay, so we got that pretty well figured out.
Okay, yeah, and then the other thing that I had on, um, the other thing that I had on the old business was that we need to sign that contract for Architend to do the MRRP grant stuff. And I sent that contract around to everybody a couple weeks ago. Um, the only two things on it is on the front, we need to put down if there is a person authorized to make decisions affecting the cost of the work. I think that should just be the select board as a whole. Uh, if we had a town manager, we could put them there, but I think that should just be us, because if there's anything that's gonna affect the cost of the work, we, as a board, would have to vote on it. And then the, just at the back, there is a spot to sign.
Okay, so, do we need to have a motion to sign this contract, or was that all take, yeah?
We might as well. I move that we sign this contract with Architend for the Town of Polat MRRP projects, design agreement.
And you read all through the contract, and didn't see anything?
I scammed all through the contract, yeah, this is the first 10 pages, and it's pretty standard. Um, they do point out in here that if their, their services are, um, are, let's see, where is that? It's not gonna exceed the amount that they said, 54,703, unless agreed to by both parties. They list that, they're working with the available funding, which is the amount the grant is, and they list their rate schedule, what they're gonna do and what they're not gonna do. Um, so they're not gonna do if there's any permitting fees. They're not gonna do if there is any, um, printing reproductions and plots, postage handling and delivery, or renderings that are requested by the client. So like, if we ask them to do a thing or something, we might have to reimburse them for that. Um, but of everything else, there, they've laid out here how much it's gonna be, which is what it was in, in their, um, proposal. And then they have the amounts, if, if there's anything that we ask them to do that goes beyond what they, their scope was, they list the cost per hour of their different architects, which is honestly a pretty reasonable cost per hour for an architect, which I don't think we're gonna wanna go beyond the scope of that. And then after this, I didn't print it all out, but they had all these appendices, which was various, um, included the, the proposal and like their, their insurance and all that other stuff.
Okay, so, you'll make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
I'm just gonna write Town of Polat Select Board here for our representative. And then, if you wanna sign this, I will get this copy and send it.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
And Julie filed the final report on the mini grant that's been closed, and the balance would be moved over to this project to, to offset the Rutland Regional Planning Commission's fee. You correct it?
No.
No?
I filed the end of year reporting on the mini grant. I cannot file anything else on the mini grant until the funds are expended. When the funds are expended, I will close the mini grant.
Okay, and we can expend the funds toward this?
And we can expend the funds towards Rutland Regional Planning Commission's work on this.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anything else under older unfinished business? New business, ordinance, you have a?
All right, yeah, I actually have a little, I have a few slides. Can you make me a co-host? Yeah, I attended a, I attended a series about ordinances, because I thought it might be relevant, particularly to some concerns folks have had in the town about, um... about trash being in people's yards, about burning of trash and things like that. And some residents had brought forward their concerns with hopes that we might be able to do something regarding an ordinance, so I wanted to find out more about ordinances. Are you ready? Let's see, yeah, it looks like I can share, uh, hmm. Yeah. There we are, okay. And, let's let me do slideshow. Yeah. Okay. So, this is a brief summary of what I learned in this, um, in this training that I did, uh, it was a V L C T training about town ordinances. And some of this, I'm sure that folks who've been on the select board for a while and had to do with ordinances before know a bunch about. Hopefully there's a little bit of new information here. It shouldn't be a very long presentation. And so the difference between ordinances and policies, because we passed some policies recently. And policies are internal, it's things like for us and for town employees. And so when we had the policies about how we're spending, how we're putting our money, the financial use policies, that's all about things that Julie is doing or that we're doing. So that's policies. And the ordinances are external, they're local laws that affect everybody in the town. And we already have a bunch of ordinances in town, like we have an ordinance about speeding and we have an ordinance about dogs and we have an ordinance about junkyards, which I hadn't really known we had until I went and looked at our list of ordinances and we have our sewer ordinance. So ordinances, these are, this is what was in the training about ordinances, that they have to be adopted by a majority of the select board and they do have to be adopted at a meeting that was warned, um, it's in the warning for that purpose. So it can be a regular select board meeting, but it has to be in the agenda that we were going to talk about and adopt an ordinance. Um, ordinances originate from authority that's granted by the state. So there's a couple of things in state statute that say things that, that delegate authority to towns to make ordinances. And then there's other things we can't make ordinances about because that's state business. We do have to follow the state and federal constitutions. We can't make unconstitutional ordinances, not unsurprisingly. Um, our ordinances have to have a rational relationship to a legitimate governmental purpose. So we can't just make an ordinance, you know, that, that Frank and Sue can't do whatever, you know, that, it can't, it has to be rational. Um, they have to be, and this one, they kind of emphasized, we have to be definite and certain, not vague about what's prohibited. So I know in the past we've been concerned about if we adopt an ordinance against, say, noise, but it was vague and then how would we enforce it, right? And so any ordinance has to be very clear about what you can't do. And it has to be enacted in the manner prescribed by state law. So that's going through a certain series of things, just like when we adopt the town plan. And this is hard to read, but this is the whole list they gave us of things we can regulate and et cetera, because we could regulate more things. But some of these are things that we already have ordinances about, like speed limits, um, in junkyards and domestic pets. Um, we can regulate like animals running at large, storage dumping, burning of solid waste, which is the one we don't have an ordinance about and we could consider one if we wanted to. And then nuisances and smoking and vacant buildings and A T Vs, these are sort of sorts of things. We also have a short-term rental ordinance that Nancy helped us make last year. So I asked this question when I was at the training because when, um, when Jennifer Sullivan had brought these concerns of local people to us and there are already some state level folks looking into it, um, because it is illegal to burn trash at the state level. So I asked the trainers, why would we want a local ordinance for something that's already regulated at the state level? And we got to type our questions in and they answered them live. And this is basically the gist of what they answered me. It's easier and more flexible to enforce a local ordinance than to jump through hoops for a state law. And I think we've kind of experienced this as a town about a number of things that have happened. Sometimes the state folks don't come down to look at something for a long time. Sometimes it takes a long time for something to work its way through the state hoops. Um, if we do have a local ordinance, and Nancy's been doing a little bit of this, like with, um, with zoning ordinances, uh, a local official can write a ticket and then there are penalty fees that the person who did the thing, like burning trash, has to pay. And the fees for that mostly minus a small administrative fee come back to locality. So that's why you might want to have an ordinance that does duplicate something like speeding or like burning trash that is illegal at the state level, but this lets us enforce it at the local level.
Question?
Yeah.
You write a ticket. Who rules on that?
So.
Do we have a judge in town?
No, but I'll, I'll, I'll get to, I don't know which, which one has, I have a slide here with the question. You're jumping ahead a little, but that's great, it's a good question. Um, so as I understand it right now, when Nancy writes out a ticket for someone for a zoning violation, um, we have, we have to, and also, I mean, our constables write out tickets for, um, traffic violations, right? So in the case of a zoning violation, that's a civil offense. So they would write it out and it would go to the judicial bureau. So whoever writes out the ticket would send it to the judicial bureau. And the person who gets the ticket would have the option, they can either pay what's called a waiver fee, which is a little bit less than what the penalty would be, so like say it's, say it's fifty dollars. There might be a waiver fee of thirty and they can be like, okay, I admit, I did it, I burned trash, I'll pay the thirty dollars. Or they might say, I'm not going to admit that I do it, but I'm just going to pay the thirty dollars to get this out of my hair. Or they can say, I didn't do it and I want to go to court. And then if they have to go to court, they go to the judicial bureau court.
Okay.
So, and then, and then whoever is our enforcement officer who would write out the ticket has to go to the court if the person contests it. So there is a little bit of work for whoever the enforcement officer is. Like Nancy has had to go to court for a couple of things for, um, a violation.
So that would be like Rutland County?
Yeah. Yep.
Frank?
Uh, Tom, you said, you said that you had some authority to write these tickets for these ordinances and some of the state violations?
In initial, uh, municipal violation, uh, you'd have to come up with a, uh, fee schedule and a range of fees, because we can adjust those accordingly. It's not a specific, it doesn't have to be a specific amount like fifty dollars. It can be like a traffic ticket, the range goes from forty-nine dollars to eleven thousand, eleven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We can write that within that range depending on the violation, so.
Yeah, and for these, for, um, for an ordinance violation, it's the law that we can't charge more than eight hundred dollars for a fee. And they did suggest that we consider these fees as what would be reasonable to discourage someone from doing the thing we don't want them to do. And let's see, let's see if this, oh, hey, it's my next slide. This was, this was an example they had of penalties for ordinances, that you might scale it up for a first, second, or third offense, which would make sense. Because part of the idea behind making an ordinance is that there's something that you want people not to do. Like leave a lot of trash in their yard or burn trash or speed or something. And so you might consider having it go up like this. And you can see here the waiver fee, which would be how much they'd pay if they just want to get it out of their hair versus how much they would be penalized if they, um, if they did contest it and then went to the court and the court was like, no, you did it. Um, that for whoever is writing the ticket, which we would decide for any ordinance, in the ordinance you write who is the enforcement officer. So we could say the town constables could be enforcement officers, the zoning administrator might be an enforcement officer. If it had to do with health, we might say that our, um, health, um, that our health officer might be an enforcement officer. We can, we could list multiple, and it's the office, not the person. So whoever is filling that office. They would then, um, they would then have to, when they write out a ticket, they would have to be as clear as possible about, and there is guidance about this, about like writing down the details of what happened and who saw it and, you know, if there were any witnesses, that kind of thing. So that if they did have to go to the court, they would have clear, um, they would have a clear indication of what had happened and then the court would believe them.
Frank?
Is there any way to investigate the burning of trash in wood stoves that goes out where PCBs and all this stuff?
That's a different, you're, you're drifting away. This is just regarding ordinance as a rule, not anything ordinance specific or specific like that. We're looking at an overview of how to properly do it.
Set the framework up.
Not any specific.
The only reason I'm using the burning of the trash as an example is because that's what folks brought to us as a concern and started me thinking about this. But it could be an ordinance about other things as well. I mean, you can do different kinds of ordinances. Um, when you want to adopt an ordinance, first you have to have the majority of the members of the select board adopt the ordinance and duly warrant select board meeting, then you have to post it in five places and then you have to publish it within fourteen days in the newspaper. This is a lot like when we do the town plan or the bylaws. Um, if voters petition, they can petition, if they don't want to have it, they, voters can petition to send it to town meeting. Um, and that's why if you want to do an ordinance, it's good to have public feedback before you do it to make sure that it is something that people are going to get behind, that it is addressing a concern that people have in the town that they want to deal with. And then the town clerk records it. And this is the bit that I already kind of addressed about enforcing an ordinance. Are these the containers of tickets? Yeah. So. Wouldn't mind seeing it. And so the select board designates one or more enforcement officers in the ordinance. The enforcement officer writes tickets for violations and files them with the judicial bureau. And this is what it looks like, this is, this is what the ticket would look like that they would fill out. Yeah, here, I'll pass this down, I've seen it all many.
Okay.
Um, the violators have the option to pay a waiver fee or contest the ticket and go to court. And there's a place on it where they can check which one they want to do, that might be on the back. Or it's right there, yep. And the enforcement officer does have to attend any court hearings. And if the violator loses in court, then they have to pay the full, full penalty fee. And it is notable, as we know as a select board and other contexts, that if someone is in a violation of something that's ongoing, every day is a separate violation. So if the violation fee is a hundred dollars for them, you know, having their dog running at large or something and then their dog continues to run at large multiple days, then every day is a, like, violation. So these are my closing thoughts on it and then I'll just quickly pull up a sample V L C T, um, uh, ordinance, they have a number of good sample ordinances, um, that, this, so these are my thoughts. We shouldn't make ordinances for things we don't want to spend the effort to enforce. And in the past, when we've had discussions about whether we would do a noise ordinance, this is kind of what the select board seemed to fall down on, was we don't want to bother to enforce something, let's not make an ordinance. However, we should make ordinances, this is my opinion, we should make ordinances for things that we want to enforce locally and not have to rely on the state. So my thought is if there's something where the state is not coming through for us to enforce something and it's being a hassle, we should make an ordinance for it. Uh, ordinances should be in clear, straightforward and written in simple language, not like legalese, so that people can look at the ordinance and they can understand what it's about and what they're supposed to do and not do. And like our dog ordinance is good that way, it's like very clear, like get your dog a license, do it. And an ordinance should help improve the health, safety, and welfare of residents of the town. That's the point of the ordinance. So that's, that's my thoughts on it. And then let me just pull up, if I can just go to this. Um, see if it's going to switch over. No, I'm going to have to stop, share and share again.
Let's let her finish and then we'll take questions.
Okay. I'm just going to once again share and I'm going to share. So this is an example and let's see if I can make it a little bigger here so we can all see it better. Oh, come on. I can probably change my view here. View. Usually that makes it get bigger. Sorry, give me just a second.
What about the bottom right?
Yeah.
The percentage?
Oh yeah, I do see that, let's try that. Oh, you're so right, thank you. I've started using a new, um, word processing program lately. That is great, okay. So this is an example of what V L C T suggests as the format for a, for a, um, an ordinance. And I pulled up the one regarding open burning and incineration of solid waste because that's what has been on my mind. Um, you have a section on the authority, that it is under the authority granted in certain sections of the statute. You put in the purpose and the purpose usually involves protecting the public health, safety, and welfare because that echoes the language the statute gives to towns, that we can do things to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And then you'll go ahead and have any definitions for any words that you use that you want to make, be clear what that has to do with, so it's not going to be confusing. So here they have, um, a number of definitions, I'm just going to skim past those. And then it gives, for this one, they give a general prohibition on opening, burning, and incineration. And basically just say that no person may engage in any open burning or incineration of solid waste in the town. And that any ones that aren't listed are prohibited. And then it goes through and you can decide what you want to, um, allow. Basically like they suggest like campfires or burning wood for your fireplace, that kind of thing. And then they go through and they let, which what, what would be, require authorization from the select board or from the fire warden. And again, this is very flexible, you can make it go how you want. And then they list how you would get a burning permit, which you're supposed to get anyhow, honestly. And then it lists the enforcement. And this part here with the enforcement, it says the violations will be enforced in the judicial bureau under whatever the Vermont state statute is that allows that. And it says the enforcement officer has the authority to issue tickets. And then it puts in the penalties and you can put in whatever penalty you want, they get, they just put in some examples. And each day that a violation continues is a separate violation of the ordinance. And then it just has the date and you sign it. So that's basically what an ordinance would look like. It would have those sorts of elements to it. It wouldn't have to be as long as this, but it could be depending on how complicated it is.
Question? Mirror, do you have to mirror the state in your ordinance or it'd be standalone?
Um, it's supplemental to the, that's what they told me, it's supplemental to the state ordinance.
Okay.
So, um, we could have something that is more strict than what the state law is. We could have something that is exactly the same as the state law is. I don't think we could have anything that's more lenient than the state law because the state law's still going to apply.
It's still Trump.
Yes, but the main idea, I mean, my thought would be to basically mirror as much as possible to what the state said because then everything's kind, then we're not going to be out of step with what any other town has done.
That was my next question.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, to me, the main idea behind having the ordinance isn't to make a new law that doesn't exist, but to make it so that we can locally enforce things. Because like I've said before, state doesn't always get down here and enforce what we might want enforced.
Frank?
Because of the nature of different ordinances, including your burning ordinance, if we do make a change from the state, would it be advisable to incorporate the town attorney with the draft?
Should we get to that part?
Yeah.
It's always good to have the town attorney look at any new ordinance or policy that we're planning on passing.
Probably. Anybody else have any questions regarding ordinances or anything like that? Well, we appreciate you going to that class and bringing it, bringing us back the information so that we're.
And thanks for showing us the ticket book.
More informed for better decisions. Is there any other new business that we want to discuss tonight? Is there any other new business that we want to discuss tonight? Public comment? Correct?
Oh, there is no more. We're, Rutland County Council is a value group is, because summertime meetings are hard to attend some for some people, so we're, we're skipping meetings.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to go to those meetings, stay tuned.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session and discuss personnel matters. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carrie?